Welcome to the June 24th Special Call Meeting Work Session of the Board of Commissioners. And today we have one and only one word section I'm going to cover, which is the initial discussion for the prepare for the public hearings on the proposed 2020 budget. This work session will be no motions, no votes, and only considering the information as presented. Remaining of the items that's in the agenda book we discussed tomorrow night at our regular is called nightly meeting on June 25th. So with that, I'll turn the floor over to Bill so he can present the 2020 proposed budget.
High-level overview of the budget, and then just to kind of give you an idea of where we head from here. On July 8th, we're going to be presenting, actually, the chairman will be presenting his official budget to the Board of Commissioners at the 1:30 BOC work session. And then on July 9th will be our first public hearing. On July 16th will be our second public hearing. And July 23rd will be our third public hearing. And also on July 23rd, which is a night meeting, we will be asking the board to adopt the FY20 budget and also adopt the FY19 millage, which will be the basis for 20's budget. Okay, so with that being said, we wanted to kind of touch on some budgetary assumptions of what we're looking at as we move forward in this 20 budget. We've been directed to have a flat millage rate, and again, this is focused on the general fund, but for the millage rate purpose and discussion for today, that is across all of the funds where the county does levy a millage. Well, we do have built in there for FY20 a 3.4% digest growth. And to kind of give you an idea of where we stand today, and that is a net growth. For 2019, the latest projections were 4.8. So it kind of gives you an idea of where we actually performed for 19, and we'll get a final digest from Steve White and Carla Jackson at the end of the month. But we do have a digest growth built in there for FY20. In the proposed budget, we are also looking at a 1% reduction in the water transfer. That's approximately $2.2 million. And this is part of a long-term plan to step that down over a period of time. So if you remember several years ago, we were kind of working towards that plan, and then we jumped to the rate back up to 10. So this is kind of a reset of that plan, and we're looking to step that down over a period of time. 1% reduction per year. We're actually working with Steve McCullers at the Water Department and building those into his models and our discussions as we move forward.
What's the current water transfer?
So we're at 10%, which is roughly about $22 million. So we're looking, every 1% we step down is approximately $2.2 million. Also, one of the things that we re-instituted in FY19's budget is the county adopted approximately $1.5 million for capital maintenance and replacement. Now, this is undesignated, and what we do, if you all remember from last year, we brought a list before the board allowed the board to look at the list, prioritize those items, and then bring back an agenda item to appropriate those or to spend those funds. So what we've done here is to make this capital replacement plan sustainable and continue to grow, because this is one of our challenges within the general fund is not having reoccurring capital dollars. Is this budget looks to add to that? So this would bring our cap, undesigned capital replacement to $3 million for FY20. Now, with that being said, we still have money in capital. $8.5 million for vehicle replacement and several other items. Vehicle replacement being the primary focus of our capital. But what we wanted to do is knowing that there's needs out there besides vehicles, we want to have that undesigned where the board prioritizes those lists. You'll receive a list that was submitted through the budget process by all the departments, take a look at the list, and then we can bring back an agenda item to establish how we want to move forward with those. But the key is to have a capital replacement plan as we move forward. $1.5 million in the general fund simply is not where we need to be, but we know we can't fix this overnight. So continuing to add to this as we move forward is the direction we were given, and it's a direction that we fully support, because we know it is a growing concern within the county. Sorry, Commissioner Cupid, can I tell you, you have a question?
Yes, so this 1.5 million, that's not in addition to existing non-designated funds for capital replacement?
That is in addition to. So last year in 2019, we had 1.5. This is an additional 1.5 above and beyond that. So this will bring the total to 3 million.
As being part of the budget, we would be expected to maintain that annually?
That would be-
With the decision that we could be making with this budget?
Yes, that's our direction, and what we've recommended is we look to continue to grow that. Because again, $3 million doesn't get you very far when in the big scheme of things. So we know this isn't something we can do overnight, but continuing to add to this as we move forward is the direction we're given. Okay? All right, and then as the chairman has stated in all of his town halls, this again will eliminate all of our senior fees, our membership fees that we had out there. This is approximately about $150,000 of reduction in revenue. But this was the, again, I just wanted to highlight that, this is coming off. And then also, one of the other discussions per the town halls, we're eliminating funding for the not-for-profits was approximately about $850,000. So those are coming off. Those are some of the big budgetary assumptions as we move forward. Okay, all right, sorry. And then the focus for this year has been on retention and recruitment. The board's already seen several items. We're going to see another item on Tuesday night focusing on public safety specifically. But I wanted to talk about some of the items that we have in there for the FY20 budget. This is public safety and non-public safety, so I want to touch on each and every one of these. So we have a 7% increase for certified and sworn officers. Now, this is broken down a little bit differently. This is to help with recruitment and retention, so the 7% is a 4% pay grade adjustment. So that's for your entry-level officers, that's going to raise their base pay by 4%. So that's going to help with the recruitment side. But then also, you're going to have a 3% merit above and beyond that. So everybody within the public safety realm will receive a 4% increase to compensation. But by adjusting those pre-pay grades, that's going to adjust one of those concerns that came up in the town halls about where do we stand with entry-level officers for sheriff and PD. And this also applies to the fire fund. So what we're talking about here will be general fund, but the 7% is for police, sheriff, and fire. Fire is going to support their own, just like they always do, but it is for certified and sworn officers only. For anybody, any staff within the county that is not a certified or sworn officer, they will receive a 4% merit. Okay, now what we're saying with that is the merit will, anybody who received a satisfactory rating or above on their FY, or their calendar year 18 performance appraisal, will be eligible for the 4% merit. And that will be based on your current salary, and both of these will be effective the first pay period in October. So we will be budgeting the full year impact. This is something different that we've asked to do. In the past, we've typically given merit in February and March, so you budget a half a year impact. This creates a challenge, because you may budget a half-year impact, but then you automatically have to pick up the full year impact next year. So what we've asked to do is say, we're going to do this the first pay period in October, so you're already budgeting the full year impact of this item. So that way, going into 20, or 21, you already have that full impact built in there. So that was something that we've asked, and the chairman's fully supported, and it allows the employees to receive the increased compensation a little bit earlier, which is great. And we have a couple other, as we said, we have some items in there. One for Tuesday night. The county is going to contribute to the public safety supplement pension plans for, again, PD, sheriff, and fire. This will be an agenda item on there tomorrow night. And we have the impacts built into FY20's budget, assuming that's approved, and we can have discussions if, you know, if and when we have that agenda item tomorrow night, depending on how that vote goes. But we do have that built in there as a reoccurring impact. And then we also will be having an agenda item coming in the first meeting in July for a $5,000 recruitment incentive for certified officers. We worked very closely with PD and sheriff on this. We have significant costs of training officers when they come to the county. By having a certified officer who's already received the training, that significantly reduces the cost that the county has to put forward to training that officer. They do have to go through some training programs, but it's significantly reduced, and this allows us to pick up more seasoned officers. And then also, the last item on here, and this is for all county employees, not just public safety. One of the challenges that we faced is looking at our pension plan. And with the hybrid plan, you receive 1% per year of service, and then you have an optional defined contribution component of the hybrid plan, where if you contribute 4% today, the county will match 2%. We are looking and proposing to change that, where if you contribute 4%, the county will match 100% of your contribution. So if you contribute 4%, the county matches 4. You contribute 2%, the county matches 2. So this is for all county employees that are affected by the hybrid plan. So again, all these items here are really focused on retention and recruitment throughout the county. Okay. All right, and this is our high-level overview of the budget. You can see it's approximately a $20 million increase over where we were last year. I want to talk about where those funds are coming from briefly. So we do have, we've already stated, flat millage rate. We're not looking to go up in the general fund. The general fund is the only fund in the county that's protected by the homestead exemption. So we're not seeing a large increase there. It's our typical increase year over year. And again, I already talked about it, it's about 4.8% over where it was last year. But one of the big drivers of this money is we saw the state change their allocation for the TAVT, the Title of the Lorm Tax that we received. That's an additional about $4 million that's going to be coming into the general fund because of that change from what we budgeted in FY19. So that was a big impact, and that is a big piece of that pie. One of the other pieces of that pie is the county's ability to generate more dollars with the cash we have on hand. So what we've done is we've put those dollars to work by investing those and taking advantage of any investment opportunities we have for that short-term period of time, which has generated additional million-plus dollars to the general fund. So that is additional monies that we're not having to ask taxpayers for, charge fees for. That's monies that we're doing by putting the dollars to work for us while we have those in the bank. Just doing it a little bit more efficiently, and the rates have gone up, which has also helped lead to that. So kind of walking down this, you can kind of see where we're going here. A lot of what you're seeing in that contingency number for the FY20 draft, 18 million of that is that 4% merit for all county non-certified and sworn staff, as well as the 7% increase for certified and sworn staff for PD and sheriff, because this is general fund only. Fire would have theirs in their contingency as well. So that kind of gives you an idea of what's comprised of that, and we can provide you a complete detailed breakout of that contingency account. But we load that in contingency rather than putting them in the individual departments, and then we move those up as the spending happens. So that way, we don't overinflate somebody's budget, and they have tremendous savings. We move it up on an as-needed basis. Our operating costs, you can see those are one of the biggest significant increases that we saw. On your one pager that you received from us, you can see a lot of that's coming from anything from impact items to departmental requests. And we took a very close look at departmental requests. I know we all, we provided you all a list, a detailed list of what those requests are, and we viewed those as basically not increasing service, but what do you need to maintain the service levels that you have? Either it's a mandated item, it's something that you're already overspending on based on increased costs, things of that nature. So we're not looking to expand services within this budget by any means. We tried to focus on what we needed to do to continue the operations that we have today. Yes, Commissioner?
Are there any requests that will not be met to maintain current levels of service that are not in this increase in operating?
So there, I can answer that in, I guess, two different ways. Yes, there's definitely requests that were not going to be met. I want to give, based on our interpretation and working with the departments, we tried to focus on only filling those requests that were maintained service levels. But I wanted to make sure you saw all of the requests. So when you, if you want us to, we're happy to send you out the list again. You're going to see what the department requested, what finance recommended, you know, working with the department, and the justification associated. So those are the key ones that we want to look at. If you can go to one, and you see that it was zero, and the justification's there, and you feel that strongly about it, that's a conversation we'd love to have. Because those are our interpretations of how working with the departments, county manager, and the chairman and vice chair, going through that list of, these are the essential ones to maintain that service level and not looking to expand. And we did say no to ones that we felt were expansions. So, and that is key. So you will see several that will have zeros along those lines, but I wanted you to have the full picture, total requests, what we recommended through the team effort and collaboration, as well as the justifications. Okay?
Remember, one-year fleet had a request just to maintain certain licensing on vehicles so they can continue to be operated. Those, I would presume, are things that are included in-
Yes.
Operating.
And the nice thing is, we were able to address a lot of those requests in the FY19 budget. So you saw a much larger increase from 18 to 19 than you will from 19 to 20, because we built a lot of those in. What we're seeing now is increase in costs for items we purchase, increase of, you know, maybe it could be anything from overtime or staffing levels and things. And we made sure to try to adjust for those. And you'll see even some of them that you'll see a request, and then, you know, through the collaboration effort, we were able to reduce that request, but still provide funding with justification to say, hey, you may have requested X based on trend and what we're seeing, we feel it could be a little bit less. Are you okay with this? And that's kind of the methodology we took. But again, it was a focus on maintaining service levels, not expanding. Okay? So with that being said, that's kind of our high-level summary. And again, this is focusing on the general fund. So what we're going to do on our next presentation, when the chairman presents the full-blown budget, you'll see all of the funds that we'll walk through. But this has been the area of focus that we wanted to touch on through the meetings with the chair and the vice chair of general fund specifically. But I didn't want to leave out fire, because a lot of this has crossover to fire, especially on the 7%, you know, the supplemental pension plans, as well as the certified officers. And then, again, the hybrid match is county-wide. So we wanted to touch on all those, kind of give you an idea of the focus of the budget. Commissioners, do you have a question? Okay, so that's really all we have for you today. We have, I know you have the one-page handout. So if there's anything you'd like to see specifically or more detailed on that, we're happy to provide it. We've talked about, I think even Rob's asked for a couple things. We're going to provide you a list of everything that's in the contingency account as we have in years past, so you can see everything that's in there and know exactly what it's for. Yep, I got the one pager right here. Do you want to put it up on that one, or use this one? Yes, ma'am.
Originally, for the increase, recommended required budgetary increases for departments?
Yes, ma'am.
Originally, it was 3.9. How'd it get to 8.6?
So this is one of those that we've, we put in there, 3.9, based on the initial finance review and continued to get in requests. So what we had is, I think, the one that we put out, the very first one, we're still getting requests in at that point in time. So I think chairman put out his option A budget very early in the process, and we wanted to caution everybody that this is not complete. We don't have everybody's requests in, but I believe you received the $8 million list of what that looks like, and we've kind of walked through that. And even some of those, based on the meetings we've had with you and the chairman, that has even been reduced from what, so this will, this continued to evolve throughout the process. So one of the, one of the big ones that we walked through will be, you know, I'm trying to think, a lot of these are going to be, you know, IS-based or public safety-based. So that's been the focus. It wasn't so much, as I think the chairman said, on those desired categories, so much as the essential and mandated categories. But again, we look to maintain service even in the desired categories and not look to make any reductions there. We just may not have filled requests to expand services.
Okay, I haven't seen the revised list of the 3.5 or 3.9.
Okay, we can provide, and I anticipated that question today. We were completely ready to send out the full-blown list to the board and any other lists that you'd like to see, any other backups. Contingency was one, I figured that would come up today, so we already have that ready to go and hit send as soon as the meeting's done.
Yeah, because I know when we went through that list, a lot of the things were already accounted for.
Yes.
And a lot were IS and things that were already implemented.
Yes.
And we have to cover.
You're exactly right, and you'll see zeros beside those. If any, you may see a request and zeros beside it with justification as to why. So those would be, because I mean, again, everybody's submitting these very, very early in the process. I mean, we're getting budget submissions in December, and there may be agenda items that have come forward since then that made those requests no longer needed, because they're already built in. So that's where some of your impact items will come into play. And those continue to be updated. I think we had a couple more impact items that hit after we've put this list together. It was about $150,000 that would have an impact into 20. So where, even what you see today on that budgetary screen for the summary, by the time we adopt it, it will be slightly different. Because if there's any agenda items that we approve between now and then, you'll have some changes.
Okay, thank you.
Did we redo the pie charts?
We can. What we wanted to do is, we didn't do it for this until we received the okay, but I can make those part of your presentation when we, the first part of July, if you'd like.
Okay, I think it's essentially, you know, once again, use that graphic of mandated, essential, and desired.
Absolutely.
Gives people an idea of what it is, how we're breaking down our budget.
Yeah, we already have those built into our model, so we can just include that as part of the presentation. We actually planned on doing that the first meeting in July. We wanted to make sure everybody was okay with the overview today, and then if that was the consensus, we'd move forward with that first meeting in July.
Commissioner Cupid, or Commissioner Gamble, I'm sorry.
Bill, can we go back to the slide where you showed 19 and 20?
Sure. Okay, this one?
Yes.
Yes.
And then on the FY2020, propose this one?
Yes, ma'am.
You handed us, okay. You have a reduction in general fund contingencies by $10,794,000.
Yes.
But on this, it shows we're increasing contingencies.
That's a great question. The reason we did that is because, again, when for 20, when we talk about any salary increases, whether it be merit or the 7% for public safety, we throw that in contingency. So in 2021, those move out of contingency into the personnel line. So in FY19, we added a lot of positions, okay? Specifically on the public safety side. Those were all loaded into contingency and then rolled up into personnel. So you're seeing a reduct, we're saying we're taking out of contingency, but a lot of these up top, where you're looking at the 4 and 7%, then go back into contingency. So we want to, we'll show you those side by side. Is the FY19 contingency, and even which ones went away and moved up into either operating or personnel, and then which ones we added that have kind of taken the place of. But that was a very good question, and that's one of the reasons that we thought that was a little confusing. But we did take $10 million, and we'll give you the list of 19 and show you what $10 million came out, and then what new things were added to kind of offset that. Because you do see an increase, but most of that increase is the 4 and 7. And what you see move out for that $10 million, a lot of that was new staff that have now rolled up into the personnel line. Okay?
On the page FY2020, propose expenditure adjustments? There's a line item that says change in stadium DS?
Yes, that is our stadium debt service. There's just an incremental change in the amount that we have to pay per year, but that follows our debt service schedule. But we did want to highlight that for you, because it is a change. The only thing that we have in debt service in the general fund, well, basically, there's two items. We have the stadium debt service and any TANs interest that we project to pay back. That's the only thing that's going to flow through the general fund.
Okay, what was the last thing you said?
Our TANs, our tax anticipation notes, any interest that we have to pay on those.
You're going to have that come through general fund?
Yes, that goes through the general fund. And we do project, and what we anticipate that being, obviously, you know, we hope to continue our trend of reducing our TANs and reducing that interest, but we want to make sure we budget an appropriate amount.
All right, and I haven't seen a schedule for the debt service for the stadium. Is it planned to increase every year?
No, I can send you a complete schedule, and if the board would like to see it, we can provide that as well. It was an incremental increase, so, but I can be happy to provide that.
Okay, thank you. And I think we're good. The public health plus-up was shared at the beginning of the year, I think, in the chairman's presentation.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner?
All right, Cornelius, do you have the sheets? And I apologize, commissioners, for only getting this to you today, but I didn't get the final one of these until Friday, and I've been out of town. So the chairman and I talked about this, and I just want to, Cornelius, let's show the last page of this first. So what you all have a copy of, and I know you got an earlier copy from the professional firefighters and the paternal order of police. What it did not have on it was the sheriff numbers. So the packet that I just gave you all, it's a grade-in-step that is for fire, police, and sheriff. And what it does is it creates a single grade-in-step for all three. And in the front of it, you can see how it combines them all. But this last page here kind of shows what the difference in expenditures would be based on this, and you can see what criteria they use to come up with these numbers. But the important thing is the table on the bottom there. The 7% cost, that's based on the 7% merit for police and sheriff that Bill was talking about. And then it shows you the step and grade costs and the differences and all that. So what I did, because I know that the chairman, if we come in with a proposal, want to know how to pay for it, so now let's put the other sheet. So what I did, and this was just my stab at it, it's about $5 million, and the total is $10.1 million, because this is police and sheriff. The fire is in its own category. So basically, anything with a pink circle changed. The X's, it went away. And then if there is a pink circle and the number's written next to it, I reduced it to that number to basically make up the difference for the 10.1 in this table. So what I would ask is that the board consider, while we move forward with the budget discussions, instead of this sheet, that we try to put this in place. Now, there'll be some discussion by police and fire that not everybody gets a raise, and that's true. But I think if you look at the cost of the proposal, the fact that it's like $8 million more, I'm sorry, $7 million more, then clearly, you know, more money's going into salaries and compensation and the pension. It's just, I think that the pain class, I think we all know that it's a broken system, and to get into something that's going to work, I think grade-in-step's the right way to go. And in my discussions with the fire and the police, and then the sheriff folks- And in my discussions with the fire and the police and then the sheriff folks, we kind of talked about putting in the grade and step first and absorbing that cost, and then you can go back and fix the pay table. You want to put the pay table up? So basically, the way it works is this pay table that's in this booklet here works for all three categories based on what their grade is, which is a PS1 through 11, and then you have 16 steps. So basically, to put this in place with these numbers is that cost that's in this handout, and then moving forward, the Board can discuss potentially changing those numbers in there to then start upping the pay. But what this does, it completely gets rid of the compression issue that we have here now. This also goes from the new hire, public safety employee, all the way up to the, the public safety director. So this covers all the gamut in the fire, police, and sheriff. And one of the things, I know the Chairman and I talked about it, and for the non-public safety employees, I know that Jackie's working on, and ultimately, my goal would be to end up with a similar pay structure for non-public safety. It just wouldn't necessarily be the same table, but then everybody would be on a grade and step, and you would get paid based on the position you're in and the years of service. And there's a grade multiplier in here, which basically helps take what we had as, you know, in a 36 different grades down to 11, and so it kind of compensates for that. So, and if the Board deems not to want to support this for '20, then what I would be asking is a commitment to put this in place in 2021.
Yeah, I just want some mathing. Just go back to the, to the one with the pink circles on it. Just want to do some math here.
And, and those are not?
That's fine.
Exactly the same?
That's fine. One thing, so it's 10.1 million dollars.
Is the total cost of?
For, not, not above and beyond the current, but that's?
No, that's, yeah, that's above, that's above.
We need 10 million more dollars.
Correct.
To pay for step and grade.
For step and grade.
Right. Okay.
Because that has fire also. But the reason, I mean, 10.1 is because this sheet, if you look at it, the 7% is just police and sheriff. So this is general fund only, so that's why I took this and did not include fire.
Why wouldn't you get credit for the 5.2 million dollars?
You do.
Oh, so.
The 5.2, take the 10.1 and subtract 5.2, and then I got to come up with another $5 million.
Okay, all right, so that's what I was going to do, because I added the different, the delta.
Yes, I took, I took it away as a 7% raise and said that it'd be part of the 10.1.
So we credit against the 10.1 million dollars.
Correct, exactly.
So you really need another $5 million.
Exactly, and, and I didn't touch, I mean, yes, I, I touched the, the 1.5 million for capital replacements.
Right.
But I did not touch any of the 8.6.
Right.
So, you know, obviously, different things can be adjusted in there, but, but I just wanted to at least bring and say, you know, it can be done.
So I guess my question is, would you be willing to bet on Tax Digest next year to do that and then implement it?
I think that's a discussion the Board has to have. I mean, you know, you, if you bet on just the Tax Digest, then you're going to assume that it's going to increase every year moving forward.
Bill knows how I feel about that.
I do. So, I, I just think that, you know, I, I think public safety needs to see that the Board acknowledges the fact that paying class doesn't work and that it has serious flaws.
Right.
And that, you know, I think there's a general agreement that a stepping grade, I mean, it works for the military, it works for the school system, it works for a lot of different industries, and so, you know, at some point in time, the Board's going to have to bite the bullet and move over to something similar to that. And then in the process of doing that for public safety, then you can move into the similar situation for non-public safety, and we kind of fix the pay scale. And then, now you can do cost of living increases, which just basically changes the numbers in the boxes. It's just, it's a whole lot cleaner.
Sure.
And plus, I think to combine all the public safety, Cornelius, this would be page four. The beauty of this, this takes all of the public, the fire, police, and sheriff positions and combines them into 11 steps. And you can see it starts at the top there with Deputy Sheriff 1, Firefighter 1, and Police Officer 1, be a grade 15, PS1, and then all the way down to the Public Safety Director, which would be a grade 36. And what, what the modifier does is, like I said, that basically takes the 36 or 38 grades that we have now and allows you to reduce it down to 11. If you, if you kind of do the math, you basically have a range, because it factors into the, the, the grade and amount they would get paid, but it basically, like, it goes between 20 and 15, so it's, it's kind of accounting for those other blocks. But it's, it's very clean, you know, it's something that easily could be translated over to the non-public safety employees. And just, you know, credit to the guys over at fire, they're the ones that came with this for fire to start with, and then Director Register asked them to put police in here and then try and make sure that we recognize the sheriff is part of this too. I asked them to include the sheriff, and this is what we came up with.
Yeah, Commissioner Burrow.
We, we have had a lot of discussion about police and public safety, and rightfully so. We have, I, I have been doing a lot of research too and getting input from Director Register, Chief Cox, and Command Staff as well, and I do feel like the stepping grade is the way to go. I'm just, I just feel like with the short amount of time we have for this year's budget and, and really studying this and, and looking into this, I think we're better going with the 7% now with the commitment to go next year to a stepping grade, once we know what level we're going to be at and what fits the best in input from public safety.
The only, and, and Chairman and I had that conversation, and the only thing that, and this is really something, Bill, you and Buddy have to look at. Right now, the problem we have with paying classes is that there's compression. And I explained to the Chairman that my concern would be a 7% raise across the board for public safety may actually exaggerate that problem, because the additional costs in here are to bring people into the, the grade and pay where they should be based on years of service and then this new set of grades. You are always, when you switch to grade and step, you're always going to have some people in the different group that are not going to get a raise the first time, because they're either going to, they're probably going to be above where they would be paid based on their new grade and their, their longevity. My concern is, just doing straight 7%, you're liable to just make those gaps even worse in that it could potentially cost even more than the 10.1 million dollars. So one of the things, I hadn't asked you this, Bill, yet, because Chairman and I just talked about it before we came down here, but I think what we need to do is, I would like to do a comparison and see, does this, if the 7% were put in place, does that make this even more expensive in '21?
It actually, and we actually ran those numbers, because now yours might be slightly different than ours. We looked at the 16-step paying class, or the stepping grade, and we had Tony run them as if we were going to do them after the 7%, so in 2021. So based on the numbers that we were given, it's approximately $8 million in the general fund in 2021 after we do what is currently being proposed. So it is slightly less.
Well, yeah, let's, let's run it again with the, these most current.
Yeah, as I said, let me.
Because I just got this Friday.
Yeah, let me look at yours and see if they line up with the one that we have.
Okay.
But we can, we can look at that and provide that information.
Because I think it's important, before we move forward on the 7%, you want to make sure that it's not putting us deeper in the hole.
Well, and, and that was one of the unique things, and this actually came, working with Tony and, and the team on this, is the four percent, the key to this was not just a 7% across the board, it was that 4% pay grade adjustment. That was the key for, to help with some of those compression issues as well as the recruitment. But yes, sir, that is absolutely something we can look at and give that information to the entire Board.
Okay.
And also, with the 4% and then the 3%, we were, it showed that the entry level was increased.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
For new hires. So with the stepping grade, they're still at 40,000.
I, it'd be something we'd have to look at the stepping grade, because I think there are a few of them floating around out there. But yes, that would be my understanding.
Commissioner Gamble, you have a question?
So I know you're looking at implementing this for staff. Have we ran numbers of what it's going to cost to implement this type of a program for staff?
Jackie, nod your head, yes or no? Jackie's actually the one that's working on this for non-public safety, and I think, I'm not sure where she is in the, the process, but I, I would guess, just because the fallacies with paying class, that there's going to be an increase.
She has, she has come to Vice Chair and I this week, and we were going to bring that to the Board, okay, to talk about, because that was before I knew about this. So it's going to be something, it was a effort to reassure the, the employees that what we're doing this month, this year, is not just a one-off, that we're committed to finally correcting the compensation structure to reflect their true value. And this would be something that we would work at, at a work session with you, once we had all the details nailed down.
Okay, because again, we're talking about, you know, next year's budget needing another 8 million to cover just public safety, what are we going to need in addition for implementing that?
Right, and, and the, you know, the employees kind of, it almost divides down the middle between public safety and non-public safety. But whether or not the, the, the costs will be the same, it would really come down to, you know, how are the grades set up, and is it a 16-year step like this one is? You know, this one tops out at 16, you know, would the non, you know, non-public safety be, you know, the same numbers, or would it be different? So, I mean, and, and like the Chairman said, like I said, I only got the final one from the fire guys on Friday, so the Chairman had not seen that yet.
Any other questions?
One more comment.
Sure.
And I know in our, in our discussions with finance and HR and County Manager, we, you know, the water transfer's been a project of mine from the beginning and with a five-year plan, and then it went back up to 10, and so I'm glad to see that even with the police startup, public safety increase, that we're able to keep that in there too.
Can I just kind of recap one thing? I'm sorry, Commissioner, go ahead and ask your question.
But my understanding, if we go to the stepping grade, that Commissioner Ott is, then that, that we'd be back to the 10%.
Only if you leave the 8.6 million alone for the departments. Remember, I, what I did, I mean, I got this on Friday, I, after the work session or the meeting this morning, I had to basically take this sheet and come up with $5 million. Okay, so I went after the easy targets, 2.2 million was an easy target because it was halfway there, but that doesn't mean that it can't be a half percent decrease or whatever, and you take some of it from the 8.6 million. I just wanted to show that it was feasible to cover the 10.1 million for the grade and step, whether or not you did it this way or whether you did it with some other numbers. But the point was to show that, you know, here's a proposal, here's how to pay for it, but there are other ways to get around it.
Okay, I just remember last year, the Board, at that time, voted to increase the water rates to make sure that we had enough funding to make the 10% transfer.
Right, well, and keep in mind too, that the water rate thing, I started that one even before Commissioner Burrow was here, and so, yes, it is near and dear to my heart, but public safety, to me, is a higher priority.
And, and I agreed, in the middle of our discussions, that if we needed to give that up, I would do it for public safety. My, my last proposal, we didn't have to do it if we go with the 7%. But you're right.
A couple, first of all, I think Steve McCullough's in the back, the last numbers I saw, that we had 61 miles of stormwater that had to be replaced. Is that, is that number still about right, Steve?
Come up here.
I just, in other words, I'm, I'm trying to address an issue that was brought up during a previous budgetary discussion about the concerns you have within your water department, and this would allow you to begin to address, at least, not all of it for that issue, but, you know, certainly a, a, an issue out there, because we don't have a stormwater fee like other ministers have to do. We have to take this right out of your operating expenses.
That's entirely correct. We have, goodness, $100 million in stormwater infrastructure that needs to be replaced.
Okay.
I don't know how many miles that's equivalent to off the top of my head.
Sorry.
I don't know how many years we have to, to cover that.
Right.
So I'm afraid I'm not prepared to answer your question.
That's okay, but, but it is an issue that's out there.
Yes.
And it, it has to be addressed, and this would help you to begin that journey, if we start to reduce the water fund transfer back.
The far bigger issue that we have is we're about to, to start to rehab our treatment plants. In the past 10 years, we've been doing a lot of line work, ordering sewer line work. Right now, we've done some studies, and we need to put some money into the treatment plant, so that's going to be a, a big-ticket item over the next five-year CIP.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other comments, discussion?
Yeah, just Commissioner Ott, I'm supportive of us moving to the paying step. It would be helpful to understand how the proposals that you made with this sheet here today impact the proposals made by the department. You know, what, what would be the impact of the personnel adjustments or transit subsidy, those that have impact in the operations of each department I would want to be more clear about? I understand that this was something that we were going to embark on for next year, but it looks as if we did do the 7%, that even with Commissioner Ott's proposal today, that it would reduce the impact next year.
If we did, yes, if we did the 7% based on the numbers we have, and again, we'll rerun those based on the proposal that Commissioner Ott got in for the stepping grade and make sure that those still line up. It does reduce the impact for, for FY '21. One other comment is on the, the personnel adjustments. I know that Commissioner Ott had circled. Those are not additional staff, that's at current levels, so that's more adjusting for spending. So we would have to look at possibly finding some additional money in lieu of that or making some policy changes. But as he said, I mean, he's, you're, you're taking the 10 million or roughly $10 million and you're using the 7% as the major offset, and then discussions of where the remaining 5 million comes from, it would be, I think, the, the direction, or what, what his suggestions were.
I appreciate that effort to, to do this, and it helps us be clear about what kind of impact it would be, but.
Sure.
Just because of the base, or the premise that I, I thought we had moving in this process, that we consider that for next year.
Sure.
It's difficult to want to, it's difficult to perceive it, implementing it right now without understanding the impact of the departments that we've been discussing for the past several months, but it is reassuring to know that there's commitment on the Board to do this for next year, not just for public safety, but for all employees. I remember working in the private sector, we had this for all of our employees, and it was very easy to follow what your pay increase would be, particularly if you performed at a certain level, and it was an incentive to want to work at a certain level when you get to chart out what your, but your return would be for that effort. So I'm certainly in support, I just, as was shared, it's difficult to perceive us putting our arms around this.
Sure.
Within a short amount of time.
And Commissioner, if I could add to that a little bit, one of the things that we've done at Rob's direction, or the County Manager's direction, sorry, Rob, is that we had to put together a five-year projection of what that, what are, what we anticipate the revenue sources would look like to, one, address, you know, do we think we could handle a merit or some sort of compensation increase for the next five years? And we've shared that with him and the Chair, and I know that's something he wants to share with y'all as we move forward and what that looks like. So we kind of have that as like a long-term picture of what we think it's going to be, and those are my and Steve White's digest growth numbers, not the Chairman's, which are much higher than ours. I think he would like to see them a little bit higher than what we have in there, but we're going to be very conservative when we provide you that information. So that can be, I think, part of that discussion too, whether you're looking at stepping grade or merit or whatever those things you're looking at to kind of give you an idea for long-term planning, which is really where we want to shift our focus, whether we do stepping grade now or in '21, or however the Board wishes to move forward. We have those, and we can sit down and talk about those assumptions. I know one of the focuses that we asked, were asked going through this process was, again, restoring that capital budget. We have those in there where you can pull different levers and say, I want to add a million a year, 500,000. We can look at operating increase as a percentage, personnel based on pension and healthcare alone, so we have a lot of different lever, levers we can pull in that, but it'd give you a long-term picture to say, if you do stepping grade, and let's say it's 10, $10 million, what does that do to us moving forward? Because then each year, you're looking at approximately 3.5, 3.6 million dollars for public safety for those steps.
Yes.
So. Well, yes and no.
Yes.
Okay, and that was the thing I wanted to point out.
Yep.
Because what happens is, the, yeah, you're going to have the incremental increases for the longevity.
Sure.
But those can be predicted out because they top out at 16 years. The other thing is, you have, there is limited number of each category, you know, firefighter The other thing is, you have, there is limited number of each category, you know, firefighter one, firefighter two, whatever. And so those can be predicted out, and the other thing is, you could, if, you know, if you wanted to, like, say you do the five-year plan, you can, you can take five years of this table, okay, and build in incremental increases in the numbers that then, as you go each year's budget, you already know, going into the next year's budget, we have, hey, we have this much increase that we already have to account for. But all of it is totally accounted for, because you'll know exactly what, how many people are going to move up based on longevity, and then you know exactly how much the percentage increase, whatever you put into the table. And, and you're not hiring new into it, because you have a limited number of positions that, you know, the whole system is based on. So, in a lot of ways, this is a whole lot more predictable than, than what we have right now. And for long-term planning, like, you know, three, five years down the road, I mean, you literally could have the five-year tables done in year one.
Just out of curiosity though, if that goes to 16 years, what are we going to do to maintain the employees after 16 years, if their salaries cap out?
Well, I could, I could call him up here, but I think he, the 16-year, and Director Register pointed out to me, because originally there was a discussion about making it 11. But as Director pointed out, 16 years, if you look at someone's career, by the time they get to 16 years, they're not leaving. Because they've only got four more years to get to 20. They're most likely in a position where they're not going to be leaving. And am I getting it right, Director? Pretty close to what you told me about why 16 was a good number? Yeah, I mean, the 16, there is, if you want to say, a science behind it. But basically, you're kind of getting someone to a point where they're going to, they've been here long enough now that there's, there's really not an advantage for them to leave. Unless, of course, you know, they were offered a chief position or something like that somewhere else. But I think the other thing to point out too, everything that we've seen prior to this did not include lieutenants and above. This is the whole gamut. This goes from the entry-level position all the way to the director.
Thank you. I know we're spending a lot of time on personnel, but another thing that's very important for us is the capital maintenance program. And I know we're putting forward 1.5 million, but it would also be helpful to see how that number is reflected in the actual needs of the county, because I think we tend to absorb that
We do.
in our SPOS program, which limits other opportunities. When buildings deteriorate to such a point where they, certain things have to be replaced, and we end up spending more long-term, so even when I look at the proposal to cut that, I think it's, it's important to have some type of documentation that shows similar to some other thing you shared, just to maintain the current standard of the building. You know, what is that maintenance going to look like? Because I think especially now, we see construction costs going up, cost of materials going up. Every time that we fall behind here, it's a greater impact to the county than we pay for in other, in other ways.
Well, Commissioner, you're exactly right, you saw that this year, when we did the millage rate increase, we had increased fund balance, and we used that to address some of those needs that had fallen by the wayside, because we don't budget for that anymore. And that was a lot of the conversations that we had last year, is 1.5 was really all that we could do to address the other, you know, very critical needs within the county. And the goal, and we all know, 1.5 for this county is not where it needs to be. And we've seen municipalities and other counties to do up to, you know, potentially 1 mil that's designated specifically for capital. So this is something that we'll have to build over a long-term period of time. Now, the great, the great news is, we were able to do a lot of that with fund balance that we had last year. We will not have that type of, those type of funds available to us going forward, so it's important that we do continue to incorporate that. But as you said, you know, SPOS is, is a focus of where we get our capital funding right now. And the items that we addressed through that fund balance item were mostly capital maintenance. I mean, there weren't any expansions, it was roofs, elevators, you know, things like that, not anything exciting.
And with fund balance being one-time monies, if we know we have recurring capital demands every year, you know, budgeting for that in the general fund would be more fitting, because we know that that's a recurring source. Because when I look at this other line item, which is looking at district initiatives for things that could come up as a one-time expense, to me, that seems like a more readily source to, to view for those activities. But it's hard to, to get us there when we just are utilizing that for, that source of funding for ongoing expenses. I know you have, you have a lot to do between now and budget time, and you've, somebody somewhere has probably started to put together a list of what those capital maintenance needs are.
We have that.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we do, and that, that's our plan, is to provide you that list. So whatever that capital replacement number ends up being, you have the full list to review, prioritize, and then obviously, working through the County Manager's office, we'll give that to Rob, have discussions like we did last year, and then present that as, this is, this is where we are. This is, I believe, through the County Manager, we presented a recommendation of, these are our priorities, but here's the full-blown list for you to have.
And, and, yes, that's helpful, and again, I'm not trying to put any more burden, because I know you and your staff do a lot to get us where we are. Sometimes I feel like when we come to our millage vote and our budget vote, we are trying to explain why we need to do the things that we've done without showing the public the things that we have foregone that are also important to the county. And I think it's important, at some point, to be able to point to some list so the public can see that we're making very measured, and sometimes conservative, sometimes too beyond measured. Because I just think every time you forego maintenance and investment, you pay for it on the backside when you have no choice but to respond to it. But I think the public needs to be aware of it, so that this conversation can be easier on both sides when we both know what, what the actualities are.
So Commissioner, to help you with that, would this be something you'd want us to do? Is when we talk, get to that capital line during the budget process? If you wanted us, we could tell you the request amount.
It would be very helpful to you, because, you know, we're talking about the budget now, but this is going to come into play when we start talking about that SPOS and the difficult conversations around, around that. To show, I mean, this is, this has bleed over into other, into other revenue sources into the county.
Understood, okay.
Sure.
I understand the 10.1 million and the pink circles taken out to get to that. But what, to consider this, what of these are already in place? Or would, how would it impact these departments, like the Transit Service? Is that already spent, or already?
Well, the Transit, I mean, it says in here, 2 to 3 million. I'm sure Erica will tell you she'll take the 3 million, if you have it. But she was basically told that we don't have 3 million, so she got 2.3. So my thought process was, she didn't get 3, so she can get 2.
So, and just to kind of give you an idea on the Transit request, the initial transit subsidy increase request was over 5 million. So when we did the, the conversations, we were putting a placeholder in there between 2 and 3, and we, we worked with Commissioner Ott and Transit and DOT very closely to try to minimize that impact. So they're, they're very much leveraging grant dollars to do that. Something to keep in the back of your mind, that, that will be something that we're going to have to look at very closely in 2020 more.
And, and the plan is, once the, the service changes go into effect July 1st, and Erica and, you know, we all, Andrea, we all talked about, we're going to sit down as soon as all that's in place, and then reevaluate again the service deliveries to make sure that, that the, we're using our resources where they're needed, and not wasting them where they're not needed. And can we, you know, it may be that to reduce that subsidy, that we add service in places where more service is needed, and take it away where it's not being used. To, you know, try to reallocate our resources, because right now, we have a lot of empty buses. But then, some of the areas down by Commissioner Cupid, we have buses that are totally full. And so what we need to do is kind of reevaluate to make sure that things are being used the right way.
I, I hear you, just, there's a push and pull to Transit. And I know sometimes there's a desire to go where there's a need, but also, I think it's important for us to know, we limit opportunities where we limit access, when we limit access. Meaning that if we limit opportunities for people to travel to other parts of the county, we live it, we limit access to different things. So it's, it's, it's very much a push and pull, because in, in some instances, people base, where they utilize Transit based on where they have it.
Right, but you have to keep in mind that, we talked about a lot of different services, increased library hours and things like that. The push and pull is the fact that, when I first got elected, the subsidy to Transit was $9 million. It's now $22 million. That, that difference, that amount of money, is money that cannot be spent on other programs around the county. So although you're correct, is that it may limit people being able to get some other places, it's even more limiting with the services that the county can't provide in local communities. And so, in our, you know, looking at it, it's going to be, you know, is that $22 million being spent in the best way? Or would it make more sense to free up the money for the commissioners to put somewhere else?
I, I, I think it's always important that we look at every line item. And I think sometimes, because that term subsidy is used, it's not looked, it's not viewed as other operational expenses of the county. But if we will look at what operational expenses are, I'm sure we would see an increase comparable to what we've seen in Transit for other departments, that a cost of providing service is going to have probably increased significantly.
I don't think it would come out to be about the same, because...
And I can't say that, but I, it would be helpful to view that. And again, I think it's unfortunate, I thought we had grown to a point where we were not referring to this as a subsidy, because nobody asks for you to pay out of your pocket when you're driving down a road. And nobody says, look at that, look at that road, there's nobody driving that road, what a waste of asphalt. But people look at a bus and say, nobody's sitting on that bus, what a waste of seats, what a waste of bus. You know, Transit is mobility, get people from point A to point B. And I just pray that, if we were to look at that expense, that it's being done comparably to other services.
Well, well, part of the problem is, in the increase, majority of increases, that past boards did a lot of stuff with grant money. And what's happened is, you know, when you put a service in place, and you say, oh, well, the first three years are paid for by grant. Well, you know, when you put something in place, and people get used to it, year four, now all of a sudden you got to pay for it. So I think that moving forward, one of the things that the Board has to be real careful, especially with Transit or anything, and, you know, the, the Board does it with the courts, where it says if the grant dollars go away, the position goes away. That has, that practice has not been done in Transit. And so all of a sudden, we have all these grants finishing out, we have service that now has to be paid for. And when it was put in place, it was never really a discussion as to, well, what happens in year four and beyond? And so I think that, one of the things that the Board can do is to make sure that before we put new things in place with the grant dollars, that we say, okay, what is the long-term impact after the grant expires? That discussion really has not been had. And so, you know, when you look at 22 million, that's a mil. Well, pretty close, close enough.
Okay, the last thing, and I'd like, I've heard a lot of pushback about the 75K per Commissioner. So what I'd like you to do is just email me what you think would be appropriate. And what we're trying to do here is that, trying to find a way to really identify the true costs of operating your offices. Because for instance, if you have an event, and it's on a weekend, well, I was giving it a, for a town hall, I do, I did the town halls, and eight of them were after hours, okay, that's, that's, that cost is absorbed by the staff.
I think, Mr. Chairman, then you need to, because now, as you're describing that that way, that's not at all, I mean, when I read this line, I think that you need to kind of explain
Let me finish it.
What that's going to...
Let me finish, all I'm trying to do is, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to deter you. I just want to have, you know, a budget that, that accounts for the cost, because even if we give the staff comp time, reality is, because we don't have a staff level high enough, they can't take comp time. So they'd rather get, they more probably should be addressed with overtime. So all I'm saying is, is that, you know, a lot of our things that we do here at the Board, we have to do after hours, because people work, all right, that's something that comes. So I want to continue to do this, but by having that line item in there for your budget, we just transfer the money out of that, out of your budget, back to the appropriate staff to pay for the real cost of doing business. That's all I'm looking at here, okay?
I think this is, I mean, it does enable us to be responsive in ways that are much, that there may be a hard time being flexible on. And I think of the time when Commissioner Burrow was looking at guard railing, and just the amount of back and forth that we went to with staff about whether or not we should install a guard, and trying to get a study. And I think having some money that enables you to be responsive to your constituents without going through all kinds of red tape, just enables us to be of better service.
Then maybe 75K is the appropriate number, all right, I just, I'm just looking for input.
Well, I, I think that, before, I mean, before I can answer your request, I got to know what you think, or what you're envisioning the money's being used for. I mean, because I could sit here and say, well, you know what, I'm going to use the money to put pine straw down the entire length of Johnson Ferry, because it'll make it look better. That's a district initiative. But if you're thinking that if I have a town hall, and I have 10 staff members show up, that I need to basically pay them, well, that's not what I'm thinking. And so I think that, you know, it's, it's yours and Rob's proposal. So I think what needs to happen, it needs to, whoever proposed it, needs to say what you were thinking, that we were going to use.
But I don't want to handcuff you either.
No, no, but I mean, but I mean, there's, there's a big difference between something that you do out in the community versus having to pay for staff to be there for overtime.
Yes, and if I may, if I may interject, I, I put this in, this is, this is on me. And I would be happy to provide the Board with a, a set of guidelines that I think that staff would envision. But I, I, I insert, I directed Mr. Volkman to put this in today's discussion. So I'll be happy to, I'll, I'll be happy to come up with some guidelines for the Board to use. But this, this is on Rob. So I'll, I'll, I'll make sure we follow up with the Board on suggested guidelines.
Here, I'm trying to provide resources to the Commissioners, and I'm getting pushback.
I think you're opening up a can of worms here on transparency, because I don't, I don't support it.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't, the, the way I saw it was, for us to do events or something like, host a festival or whatever, the, the county would pay for that. If it's a county function, I mean, your county's already doing that. And our town halls and, and fish with the commission, all that stuff, I mean, I don't, I, I, I think it's a mistake to give us $75,000 and no strings attached. We can spend it however we want, no accountability, no coming back to this Board, that's what I saw it as.
That's never going to happen, you always have to submit a bill. I think the real thing here is, is that the Board, the, the staff has a plan for what they want to do with their funding. But then the Commissioners also would like to do certain things, all right? And that involves above and beyond what the staff is planning. All I'm saying is, if you want to use the staff to do that, I want to support you. I just think it's a better way of tracking the money, because, you know, otherwise, they're going to respond to you as a matter of courtesy, yeah, of course, I'll set that up on Saturday. And they know, what you don't see is, is that the true cost of doing that business, because they hide it from you.
And, and that is exactly true. And I think that's what's been going on too long, and is pervasive, not just with this line item. But we do come up with things and initiatives, and there's growing impact on staff that tries to be as responsive and flexible as possible, and they don't allow us to see the true burden of that. And if this is a way to help shoulder that, and still allow us to be responsive and do things, I mean, I'm supportive of it, and maybe that will help us to be more accountable too, with those cost, those true costs on, on the county.
I don't think $75,000 is going to cover parks and rec, all the events that they do for us. But why, why can't it be in the County Manager's discretion budget?
Because why would I want to...
And approve it.
Why would I want a Commissioner to go to the County Manager to do something that you believe is in the best interest of your district? You're the best judge of what goes on in your district. I mean, I think the County Manager would see that, and he'd want to support you.
I think, I think that we need to kind of see what Rob and the Chairman had in mind, because that, that could kind of be, okay, that makes sense, or it could be, eh, I don't think so. But I think right now, we're kind of talking, you know, kind of in a fog, because we really don't know. I mean, we've already heard like four different ways that you could spend the money, or not spend the money. And so I think that, you know, when Rob sends it to the Commissioners, it may be a lot easier to kind of evaluate it.
All right, well then, thank you, Bill, and with that, we're adjourned. Thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate your time today.